Everyone ready? It's a six three, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming. First item on the agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. If anybody has any corrections or updates, if they'd be kind enough to share them, otherwise I'd look for a motion to approve, please.
We need to put Colin as absent, Schnutt is here, he wasn't there. So that correction has been made online already.
Okay, thank you. Any additional thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
No, second not.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that will take care of our minutes. Next, public hearing for a variance for a fence.
All right, in including your packets, you have a couple of items tonight, and I'll let Ian talk about most of them, he did a good job writing them up, I think. We have a pretty simple straightforward request. There are some things that he's going to talk about and kind of relay the request, and with that, go ahead Ian.
Yeah, thanks. So the applicants here are Jake and Julie Thompson at 1005 Seventh Avenue Northwest. This is in the Stoneridge Second subdivision in northwest Casson. So they've requested a variance to the standard height for fences, which is six feet. They've requested permission to build an eight to ten foot fence in their backyard. Included in your packets is their application where they have a narrative and explain a few different reasons why they felt a variance was required there. There's the Sunset Trail that runs right next to their backyard, and also Eighth Avenue Northwest, which is the dump road or county highway twenty-one, is also in their backyard there. But basically because of the topography there, they've got a pretty steep drop off in their backyard, and they feel that a six foot fence wouldn't be tall enough to provide privacy to their backyard. They're also planning to build a above ground pool in their backyard next to their house, and yeah, just feel that a six foot fence wouldn't be high enough there. So we've discussed this quite a bit as a staff level with our development review committee, and after all those discussions, we basically felt that, given a request, that a variance wouldn't be very appropriate in this situation. And I've got a few findings of fact there that outline our reasoning behind this, so I'll just go through those a bit briefly here. So the first factor we have is the reasonableness factor. So we felt that, yes, it's a reasonable request to have a privacy fence, however, the height of the fence, a ten foot fence, may not be a reasonable request considering I'm not aware of any other ten foot fences in residential properties throughout the entire city. The second factor is uniqueness, and so we felt there that just the topography alone and the fact that the Sunset Trail runs through their backyard isn't enough to be considered a unique factor there. This is a newer subdivision, so Stoneridge Second, so there's still houses being built on Seventh Avenue Northwest, there's still new people moving in there. So we just felt that if we allow this variance to come in, then you could conceive that there are, there could be further requests for variances for the same exact thing, and then we could potentially have a whole line of ten foot fences all along that street there. And then the final, the final factor there is the essential character of the neighborhood. And so with that one, we felt that, again, an eight to ten foot fence is uncharacteristic for residential neighborhood there. And that's not to say that there aren't reasonable alternatives that could, you know, help out with the privacy factor instead. You know, that could be a more vegetative response where we say you could plant, you know, trees or some sort of evergreen bush that would provide privacy to their backyard, but may also be a bit more attractive than a ten foot fence. Or just simply moving the fence further up the slope. And included in your packets too, on the very last page of the report, is a example of what a sightline assessment might look like. So you can see that simply by moving the fence further up the slope, it would reduce the height of the fence required to still provide privacy to their backyard. It's not perfectly to scale, but it just kind of gives you an idea of what that might look like. There's also some site photos as well submitted by the applicant, as well as my photos that I took.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Ian?
Is, while we're looking at it, is there any reason that backyard couldn't have fill in it? It'd still have drainage, could they not fill it to bring it up a little?
Could they backfill the slope so the fence essentially goes higher?
Because they added that in the first place, it never...
Right. There is a drainage easement that runs parallel to the back of their property, so that would be something we'd have to take a look at.
I mean, how much room would you have in there?
Yeah, and I don't know that. That would be something that probably a surveyor or an engineer would have to give you an idea of, because, because then that might be a possibility of raised, I know that when we talked about, Brandon had suggested possibly looking at a retaining wall.
Mm-hmm.
And put the retaining wall in place, and then you could put the fence on top of the retaining wall, and that would, that would actually be a better option than, you know, than having it, because a six foot fence would do nothing, especially if it's the rear of that lot, I mean, it's, you're still going to be able to, especially if there's a pool, I mean, it's not going to do anything for them.
Yes, so this photo here of you, Tim, is that you standing at where a fence would be at about six feet?
Um, so I'm actually standing at the property line.
Yeah, Tim is on the property.
I'm on the property line, so right now they're not asking for a CUP to put it on the property line, they'd be looking at three feet up, but I just wanted to give an idea of the back of their property, from their property line, is about six feet from what I can see, I mean...
Yeah. That photo was taken from the path?
Yeah, he was, he was standing on the path.
Yeah, no, I'm not standing on the path. The very first picture there, the one with Julie in it, she's standing three feet off of the property line, and she's holding a, an eight foot pole.
Eight foot, two by four.
And the person was standing on the, on the trail, I believe, when the picture was taken.
My son was standing on the trail.
Yeah, so I think that, that was an option that, that Brandon had suggested was looking at, so I mean, along the lines of what you're talking about, about building that up without having to have that ten foot fence or whatever, so...
Because, does it really make a difference at the end of the day whether you have two feet of retaining wall and then a six foot board fence, or if we just have an eight foot fence?
Yeah, it does, actually.
Does it?
Because of the aspect of looking at it, a two foot retaining wall, by far is much better looking and maintained, and it will follow the contour, and then you set it above it. Where if you build the wall, you get, it's so much more repair, yeah, it's a retaining wall, but the other thing I was wondering too is how far is that drainage easement on there?
It's a ten foot drainage and utility easement.
So, you know, if you're putting a fence in, you'd have to stay away from that ten foot.
Right, so I mean, they aren't requesting you on the property line, so they'd have to be at least three feet off, up onto the hillside. So I, I don't know that the drainage should be an easy, if, because if they put the fence there, it's not an issue with the drainage, if they fill it in, was more my point, but it could create an issue with the drainage. Because it could just create more of a drop off.
It does look like where she's standing there would be in an easement. I mean, it's not according to what you're saying, but just from the view of it, from that slope there, from the swell coming from the east going, you would have water coming, I wouldn't want water that close to my, either, but I don't know. I'm just looking at other ideas, options.
I think part of the issue is going to the point that Ian brought up about the uniqueness of the neighborhood. You know, it's fascinating to see how much it drops off, because you've actually got the property to the south, and you can kind of see in the picture there, it's actually even higher, and then the property to the, the north is, is down about, I don't know, three and a half, four feet, so...
So there's a whole line of houses along the dump road that are going to have the same issue?
Yeah, there's a whole line of houses along that line that are all going to have a similar situation where they're all going to have the, I mean, and as you go farther north, it's even a bigger, you know, stratification, you're going to have the trail even higher above that. So, I, you know, that, that was a question I know Ian had, was just in terms of the uniqueness of the property. Typically, you know, statutorily, legally, when we grant variance, it has to meet some of these criteria, and whether we want to or not, it's just, that's how the state code works. I think that's why Ian brought up the points that he did.
So the six foot fence is kind of pointless for privacy, right? Is what we're saying? And that's, would be the same for all the neighboring properties?
I mean, the only, I mean, I think to Ian's point, if you wanted to put a six foot fence up, if you moved it up the hill slope, right, I mean, at a certain point, it becomes useful again, right?
Agreed, but if their neighbor's slope is different, their six foot fence to be useful might be in a different spot, so are we going to end up with those row of houses with their fences all different positions?
Exactly, that would probably what you'd see.
Is that worse than having a taller fence that's a little further away where they could all be in line?
I mean, in terms of aesthetic...
But if somebody puts it on the property line, if somebody puts it three foot up, they're not going to be in line either.
Right.
So you're, you know, and that's an option that you're allowed to do.
I mean, if they were all flat, if I can imagine, like you said, if they were all flat, you know, and you had fence after fence after fence, just like kind of hooking off each other kind of thing, I mean, it wouldn't look too bad. I've seen it before in, you know, suburban neighborhoods, but here you're going to have the elevation, it's going to be, I don't know, I, you know, it's, it's hard to know exactly what it would look like, depends on the materials. You know, are we doing solid fences, are we doing chain link, I mean, in this case they're talking about privacy fence, but somebody else with a lower lot might just put a chain link fence up, so it might not be as bad, I don't know. You know, I think about, on Fifth Avenue Northeast, you know, the, it's probably the best parallel I can think of really is the, the fairgrounds have got a big fence, a solid fence, if you go up to school on Fifth Avenue, you've driven past that probably on the west side of the road and thing, that's, if that was next to my house, it probably wouldn't be the most attractive, but once again, I don't even know if we want to delve into aesthetics as opposed to the statutory requirements that Ian talked about.
Thank you, any more questions? Mr. and Mrs. Thompson, before I open up the public hearing, did you have any comments you'd like to share with us?
Um, just that, yeah.
If you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium, please ma'am.
Our plan will be a wooden fence decorated both front and back, eight to ten foot tall, and where you see the picture of me standing, that is an eight foot board, the only one I could get from the building center here that day. And you'll also see a photo of my son standing up between the house to our south and the edge of our house with that same set board. We tried to stand in different places and give you a better view of how that slopes down, it's a terrible slope. We're worried that, you know, we're going to put in the trees, whatnot, it's going to cost a lot of money to buy trees that are filled in big enough, old enough, that we can have the privacy this summer. I'm all for planting, but the fence is, it's, people that are walking by, and we're sitting on our patio, are looking directly at, at a face to face, eye to eye. So that's our big thing right there, is that privacy, at least on the backside. We're open to making it so it'll graduate down to a six foot fence towards our house, just something to think about, I guess. We don't want to build a fortress around our house by any means. I'm all about looks too, and the neighbors also. So it's something that I really feel passionate about is having some privacy, I guess, and with having that path there, it's just not in the cards unless we have at least an eight foot fence. So I guess that's, all I'm wanting you to consider is, if we have to put in cinder blocks and stuff and build that up, that would require us to bring fill in, and I don't know if that's a possibility of even, you know, I don't know where that water, what you people were talking about, where that, the city has their...
Easement.
Easement. But it is, where I'm standing is three foot up from the property line. So that's all I have to say, I guess. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson? Thank you, sir. With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone else has anything they'd like to share, by all means come up to the podium. If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Gentlemen, your thoughts?
And you mentioned vegetation. In the event that they have a pool, is vegetation considered an appropriate containment for a pool? Because I think, I could be wrong, isn't there some sort of requirement that you have to have a pool fenced in?
We don't consider it...
For an above ground pool?
It is not in, in our zone, yes. Some people's insurance requires it, but the city does not require it.
Okay.
If you look at the site plan where they're intending to put the pool and where the, the back of the fence is, I would think there would be enough of a, enough real estate there that any sort of, of plant wouldn't be impacted by the swimming pool, at least I wouldn't hope it would be. I'm not a pool expert by any stretch of the imagination. Got to be honest, I like the retaining wall idea. Bring in some fill. That may be the best solution to the problem at hand, but I'd feel better if somebody argued with me.
Well, I think aesthetically, that's certainly the most pleasing, because as soon as you say eight to ten feet, I think wall, I don't think fence. And I know how much it drops off there, I live up in that neighborhood too. And I think, I don't know, a retaining wall would require some fill, but it would certainly be a lot more pleasing as you're going down a busy road.
If you don't want it to have aesthetic exactly to look when, when you know, this property has got an actual retaining wall, that's saying, if, if we start something, then you're exactly right to make it look halfway decent, it's going to kind of have to continue, you know what I mean? And a retaining wall is not going to be self-cheap, backfill is not going to be cheap, fence is not going to be cheap, and you're going to end up making it look decent no matter which point you do it. Fence is actually the cheapest way, and I don't want no more than a six foot fence, I mean, whatever it takes to make a six foot height, I mean, that's what you guys allow, right? If we're a six foot fence, we have to stay three foot off the property line. Now, if you want to go a four foot fence, I believe your paper said we could put it right on the property line. But no, I, like I said, I mean, it's however you guys feel about it, I mean, if we do a retaining wall to make it look the same, everybody's going to have to do it.
If they want to put up a fence for that reason, they may not want a fence.
Otherwise, we'll still be hearing what's hands down on that block.
Yep.
I think looking at these photos, an eight foot, an eight foot fence seems reasonable to get the privacy that they're asking for, and not unreasonable to, you know, look like it's a wall guarding a castle, right? Especially since it's going to be lower into the, because of the depression there. Now, a ten foot fence, you know, maybe not, so I don't know if we could potentially recommend or say that has to be eight and no higher, or if that's not what the application says or, or what our options are, but to me, I think is, eight foot seems reasonable. The six foot, like Ian said, moved up the slope, depending on how accurate that scale drawing is, you know, it kind of cuts out half their backyard, which is quite a bit.
Well, doesn't cut it out, it just...
It makes it essentially unusable unless, you're not going to let your kids go out on the other side of your fence.
True, but it's still...
You can't let your dogs go on the other side of your fence.
The way I look at a variance is that it sets, it sets a precedent in my mind, and this is just my interpretation of it. So you really have to look at the set of circumstances for the entire city, and anybody else that comes to us with a, a slope in their backyard that wants to put up a higher fence, we're, we're basically setting a precedent that would allow them to do that right here and right now. But that's just my perspective on it. That's why I hate variances. Sorry, I always look at variances. Well, there's somebody who needs to continue to argue with me, I'm afraid, or I, I need something in the form of a motion, please.
I'd love to argue with you, Tom, but I can't.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get people thinking and talking, it's awfully quiet.
In the agreement, I understand that it's, that there's a cost there, but I, I, at the end of the day, I think with, with things like this, I think the leveling of the yard with a, with a, some sort of retaining wall, something or whatever it might be, and then if you, you know, then you add your fence to that. I understand the, moving the fence up the yard, you know, gets them what they need, but I, I also agree that you're, you're not going to want to do that because you're cutting, you know, the majority of your yard off, like that's, that doesn't really serve the purpose either, so, but I, I don't think, I don't think putting an eight foot fence there is, is what, is what we should do, so, that's my opinion on that.
Any other thoughts? I need a motion, please.
I'll make that motion to deny the variance.
Motion to deny, do we have a second?
I would second it.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
That one nay, but that would be our recommendation to the city council. All right. Thank you for coming out, guys, sorry. Next up, Fourth Avenue Lane Apartments.
Um, just an update, that it has been since, hasn't been a year, they were talking to us in October. We have, they're still working on their green space requirement for the apartments. So just to keep you guys updated, because it seems like it's been a long time since we've heard about them or talked about them, and when it goes beyond a year, we send them a letter and they have to basically start over. So it hasn't been that long, but just to let you guys know, we're still keeping an eye on everything.
Yeah, by the high school there and all of that, yes.
Question?
Just the location of where this is, but it's by the high school and all of that.
Sure, Fourth Avenue and Sixteenth Street. Sorry, I shouldn't laugh.
We've been dealing with it for a while.
Yeah.
But it's a good question.
Is this the one that's coming in 2021?
What's that?
This is the one that's coming in 2021?
Well, townhomes are there now, or at least somewhat there.
But the actual apartment.
But, but the apartment itself, and actually, I don't know, Paul, are you familiar with the project?
Not very much.
Okay, just so, we have a couple of new members, so previously, just so you know, like, we do, Linda and Ian do it, they track these applications, because we don't want, we really don't want them to have to restart it, because it's paying the butt, you know, it costs them our money, because you have to submit it all over again, we have to publish it and do hearings. So they had originally gotten approved for the townhomes, like some of the townhomes that are there, and then they had come in, they'd asked for a preliminary plat for a apartment complex. I don't remember if it was forty-eight unit or, was a little smaller than that, maybe?
No, it was smaller than that.
Yeah, well, it might have been thirty-five units, we used to have a map up here, but I don't think it's up here anymore. And so that property's kind of in limbo right now, we haven't heard from them, so that's why Linda's just tracking these things and letting you know, so...
So this is property right here, right? They built the townhouse right here, and they were going to do an apartment down here?
Yep.
Okay.
And the townhomes, so...
Yeah, two of them have meters on them, two of them don't yet, so you have to drive by. So, thanks for your update, Linda.
Any questions? Uh, next, item number five, reason to allow a billboard.
Yeah, so I've been having a number of conversations with Reagan Outdoor Advertising, the billboard company, but they've, they'd like to build a billboard on a piece of city-owned land in southwest Casson, kind of by the cemetery there. They just submitted an application to rezone that property from Development Holding to C3. Just got it last week, so it was too late to get it for this meeting, but we'll plan to have a public hearing in June, so, just so you know.
This little strip of land between the, like off-ramp and the cemetery there?
Yeah, it's actually on the south side of Highway fourteen.
Yeah.
So yeah, that strip that's part of a remnant, when they moved fourteen over, they kind of cut it in half, so there's about four point seven acres, I think.
How much, how much are, do they need?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we're hoping to be able to rent out the residual, but it's only going to be like four acres that they'll rent out, and the, the sign would be on a, I mean, it's just a billboard, so I mean, I don't know if they need, maybe have any...
But they got to have access and stuff, so...
Yeah, and they'll have to have access, but they should have access, we've talked to them about that too, so. Um, right now we're renegotiating those leases, but Ian wanted to let you know that there is a planning commission, public hearing that we'll have scheduled for the next meeting.
I assume that, that parcel, because of its location and shape, is not very valuable for anything else?
Yeah, I think, did you contact Fiegel?
Not yet, it's...
Okay, the, the idea would be maybe to rent out the rest of the land of the farmer that's adjoining and have them rent it, but it's not worth a lot, I mean, maybe eight hundred bucks if you get two hundred an acre, so, something like that, but it's better than nothing.
Yeah.
Billboards regulated at the state level or at the county level?
Well, they're required to have certain zoning at the state level.
Okay.
So I don't know that Dodge County is regulated, some counties do exert their authority to regulate, like I-90, I know when I was in Faribault County, they said no billboards.
That's what I was curious about too, is how close to the highway and MinnDOTs right away and all that.
Yeah, so they're still going to have to meet all those state requirements. They have the billboard that's on the north side also, on the residual of the Vale property there, so that's not something we can, or will mess with, but he, I think Ian just wanted to let you know that that's going to be coming.
Uh, next up, Mr. Wilker's conditional use permit.
Yeah, so the planning commission just brought it up last meeting, asking about the, the, the plants, stock nursery survey thing. But anyways, I did ask Charlie and Ben right after that meeting if they had done that yet, and they hadn't done it yet, still planning to do it later though, but Tim and I actually did go out to the site earlier this month and spoke with an employee there about what they're planning to do there in the coming month or weeks, so they're planning to get a shipment of trees and whatnot in the next few weeks here, at the end of this month, early June, somewhere in there, so I'll be following up with them, uh, once they get those trees, and then see about that stock survey after that.
So we got a CUP restricting how many trees they're allowed to have on?
No, requiring to have it elsewhere.
Yeah, not, yeah, not restricting, but they have a, have a certain number.
How many is it?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's a pretty good number.
They're classified as a nursery there, so they have to have so many.
When we said it, it increased over the next two or three years.
They did just add some new bays, some new rock gravel bays too, so we did, actually Ron Unger is working for, for Jason up there, so it was, it was actually a pretty good visit, they haven't always been as good with Mr. Wilker himself, but, oh, I like Jason, but he can be a little prickly, but, but Ron was pretty good, and he went through it with, and so we'll get some good photos and, and, I don't know, we didn't see that they probably were entirely in compliance now, but we need to make sure, we'll just keep following up with them, so...
What kind of hornets nest you getting into if you point out that structure that he started there without a...
I mentioned that, and said, and Ron said, Jason told him, he's just waiting for the building permit for the city, which is, we got a whole lawsuit about, you know, five years ago, so...
Well, I mean, that would be my only criticism as a resident driving by.
I brought up with Ron, as I said, that, you know, he, he said they were going to take the tarps off, so that's good, I don't know, I mean, in the long run, I don't know, and you, planning commission can probably tell me better, like, why was he not allowed to expand it, is because he's, he's a non-conforming user?
No, he, he started the building without a building permit.
Yeah.
Then he didn't confirm...
And that's what opened up all the digging into the CUP that was there, and...
And then he wasn't in compliance.
...by road downhill.
Yeah. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if he wanted to finish the building, I don't have a big problem with that, it's more of a planning commission and city council thing.
He'd have to, on that building, he'd have to get it inspected, to do that, he'd have to take it down to get the whole...
I don't think we had an issue with it either, it's just that he was trying to do it without...
A permit.
A permit, because he was told that he didn't need one.
Yeah, he was given verbal permission by a city council member, if I remember the story correctly, but you...
Yes.
That, that's my recollection, that shouldn't be taken as gospel. Yeah, the, the whole thing started, and again, just my, my recollection is, you know, A to Z sanitation used to keep garbage trucks in that particular structure, and it got a little fragrant in the summertime. A to Z, I believe, sold out to waste management, and Mr. Bigelow was looking for other potential uses for that chunk of land, and I think that's where the conversation between he and Jason kind of started.
And the, the CUP was actually, and Linda, you'd have to correct me, but the CUP was actually given to Bigelow, not to Wilker. It was kind of done on his behalf.
You've got it there, Linda.
I've got it right here.
It was, if, if I remember correctly, it was given to...
Uh, it says Jason Wilker, owner of the property.
Is that the original one though? Probably not the original.
That's the second one.
That's probably the second one that was approved.
The second one?
What's the date on it, sir?
Uh, twenty-second of April, twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's the second one, the original one was different.
The original one was...
Sorry, sorry.
So, but...
But I mean, there's no, there's no reason, I mean, I think it'd be better if the building was done, but to do it, you would need a building permit, would have to... done, but to do it, you would need a building permit, would have to fit under the CUP, and it would have to be inspected, and that was why I made the decision to do it.
Well, see, I'm, I don't wanna trigger the series of, okay.
Exactly. But we wanna do it right if we're gonna do it.
Yeah, so why don't you follow up with that and check on the status and see what they're really up to? I know they're gonna take the tarps off, but, yeah, I mean, it, uh, you know, it's definitely, I think if it was done properly, that property could be really attractive. And, you know, the way Ron was laying it out when he walked us through it, I mean, of course, Ron's a perfectionist when it comes to the parks and that sort of thing, so he's probably a really good addition to the staff there at, at Wilker's, so.
I believe the original conditional use permit doesn't allow him to add on to that.
Sure.
But that, again, is my memory. Doesn't mean we can't reconsider it. Doesn't make me, I mean, just-
2010.
2010.
Yeah, that's-
We can take a look at it, but I do know that, that city council in the past has been hesitant to revisit anything, because we don't wanna get into another lawsuit, so.
Oh, and we, and I, I know in conversations that we've had with him, when he was willing to actually talk to us, we, we tried to make it very clear to him that we were willing to work with him if he just did things the right way.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
I think we were pretty amicable to him growing his business and staying here in town.
Yeah, that's a good, good benefit for the city and for him.
And there has been a little change there, too, because as you know, that, the Bigelow White Eighth to the, the west there is starting to really fill in. So, we did talk a lot about screening there, too, and he's planning on pulling those fence posts that he's got along the fence there, and they're gonna be putting some more trees in that hole as well. So, that'll help, because, uh, those lots in the cul-de-sac are right to the west now, and, you know, it'd probably be good just for the screening.
And there's potential to the north of him, too.
Yeah, it's possible. I mean, that property, I think Joel bought that before he passed away, and so, I know we've seen a preliminary concept design for that property as well, where they were looking at some townhomes and some smaller houses, kind of the same style as the Turkey, the old Turkey farm area, kind of. So, so, yeah, I mean, so he's gonna be encircled probably in the next five years. So, definitely something, why don't we follow up on that?
I think it's Ralph Engelstedt's old tree farm there.
That's Bigelow.
That's a big one.
Joel bought that before he passed away.
Trying to keep track of it all.
Yeah. And that property's got its own issues, so.
Yeah.
Well, I just, yeah. Um, park planning, item number seven?
Yeah, so that's something that I've been working on with our city hall intern over the last several weeks here. But, basically, we're just taking a survey about, uh, the different parks in Casson and the different amenities that residents may want to see in the future park plans. So, I've sent it out. Uh, it's gone out with everyone's utility bill the last time, the last month's utility bill, and it's also been posted electronically on our Facebook website. Um, I've gotten some pretty good responses so far. I think last time I checked, we're up to 169 responses total. So, that's pretty good, I would say. Um, but generally speaking, I'd say, so far, most people are looking at wanting more restrooms, or seating, or playgrounds especially. That was the number one that they wanna see in our city parks. But, so, uh, planning to do a presentation next week for the park board meeting, just a high-level overlook of all these survey results, and then go from there. But, I did pass out a few copies of the survey. If anyone wants to complete it, uh, now and get it back to me, that'd be nice. I know some of you already have completed it, so thank you to those who have. Um, but yeah, that's what I-
See, the larger point, too, you know, one of the reasons we're doing this is for the parks that exist, but as a planning commission, it's also something we have to take a look at for park planning in the future. You know, obviously, we work in tandem with the Park and Rec Committee, but, um, you know, you guys, when we developed that Lions Park Plan, for example, you know, we take that guidance from you in terms of where are we situating parks. We know as the southwest property develops, that's something that Planning and Zoning will want to take a look at. As right now, the, the south side of, south of 14 is, I'm gonna call it chronically underserved from park perspective, and, um, partly because it's a private development on that southeast part of the city. But, we know that we need to up the, up the park game there a little bit, too. So, that's one of the reasons. I know Ian wanted to, to make sure that you're all aware of what's going on now, too.
Yeah.
Be interesting to see how this survey and some of the feedback that you get now, how that compares to the, you know, the county plan survey things that have been done in the past, and how, if that is still tracking to be the same.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And along with park planning, just to let you know, the county is planning on detaching their property from the north, far northwest of Casson. Uh, so they have a parcel that's about 40 acres, or is it 40 acres? Might be 20 acres.
Well.
I don't remember. But it's like, sort of a rectangular parcel. I think, uh, you'll remember, a couple of years ago, they had asked to put, put solar on that property, and we had said we were guiding against that. So, now they've decided to, uh, to put in a county park. It's part of the property, it'll be part of the old, uh, waste transfer station and this parcel. So, they've, uh, requested that, and they're gonna be submitting their petition to the state for detachment. So, that will no longer be in city limits then, at that time. So, just giving you a heads up on that.
Uh, in the other category, is, uh, the plan to continue to do a parking study on Main Street still on the radar screen? Has that-
Oh, yeah.
-been formalized? And is it appropriate to discuss it here?
Sure, I think so.
Uh, do you have any questions, or?
It has just come up in conversation a lot here recently with, um, 57 being shut down and people, uh-
Well-
-navigating their way to where they need to go and-
And to the park plan, for planning that, that's not gonna be something that the city plans on doing until after the construction.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. I just didn't know if, if we had a definitive plan that we could-
Well, I think we're scheduling for August, pending the project being completed. We have a, the plan is to do, um, three visits a day on the days that we check it, and it'll be different days. It may be over a couple of weeks where we just visit three times a day, just because we wanna get a good, we need to take the highs and the lows out, because those, we need to average it out to as much as we can. Um, one of the issues that we run into is just, uh, and this would be a good exercise for, for you guys, too, as a, as a plan commission. I mean, all council will have their feedback. Where are people are gonna park? You know, how are we gonna do this? Because in the long run, you know, we added some stop signs and temporary stop signs, which seem to be helping, at least in terms of, you know, I think the first week, everybody was a little bit crazy. You know, I mean, everybody's trying to learn where they gotta go, and now they know it just, it's gonna take an extra minute or two. That's, that's what it is. It's a little slow down. But, it's safer, people can stop. You know, I've noticed it on Main Street where we put the stop signs on.
Yeah.
You know, that, that even there has seemed to, and I, I don't wanna put stop signs on Main Street necessarily, but it does slow people down. It does, you know, on some of those intersections, at least. Um, so, so that's something that, yeah, I know Ian's gonna be gearing up for later this summer, and as far as we know, the project's still on schedule. They did run into some issues, um, on 34 Roundabout with, uh, some disturbed soils, but, um, you know, hopefully, at the end of summer here. So, yeah, I mean, if you hear things, you're hearing things in the street, like, we're very interested in it. We've had a lot of interest from the Chamber of Commerce. They're very interested in it. I know Mayor McCurn is very interested in providing options for off-street parking, um, especially in behind the, the Legion area where the city owns some property. Part of it is how, you know, how do you pay for some of those things? You know, if it's gonna cost $200,000 to pave that parking lot, how do you pay for that? You know? So, yeah, we're definitely very interested in getting feedback, um, in, in some things from different folks. Because, right now, I mean, we're not quite at full occupancy on Main Street. If we had one or two more of those storefronts that were full, I mean, there's one or two that are empty, you know, or don't have businesses in them that are real active. If you change that, you really have a max, you know, you have a maximum amount of parking.
And the movie theater hasn't been open.
And that hasn't been open over. That's gonna be, that's another thing that's gonna be potentially kind of a, a very interesting thing on a, a hot movie on a Friday night or something. You're gonna have a, people have to walk, which is fine, you know? So, no, I agree. Something that's gonna be pretty interesting to see.
I'm probably gonna be obnoxious and bring it up the next couple of meetings, just to see how things are evolving.
Sure. Sounds good. Well, I mean, we can certainly maybe, uh, bring the examples of the information we're gonna be looking at and the sort of the framework of it to the August meeting, if you'd like.